This is general overview of the budgeting process, starting with what's the budget? Why is it important? Why are we all here? And forecasting is part of it, which was one of the things that came out on the poll, which is a good thing to look at. The actual budget process itself and then thinking about the preset. And also as well as that, the budget is a sort of all year round process as well. And I also noted in the chat, a couple of people said they had problems with everything and a few people were new. So this is absolutely perfect. And for those of you, so we're really starting at the beginning and hoping to give you a full overview of everything. Questions at the end of the session, but also if you've got any comments or observations as well, that's nice. Because sometimes to have a sort of a little bit of a chat and about how you've dealt with things previously or some things have worked out at your council is useful as well. Because with budgeting, some of this process is going to be down to your own interpretations, your estimations, your expectations of things, you know, and it was not an exact science. So to get a feel for maybe what other people are doing, it can be really useful. Super. So let's get started. As we said then, to begin, what is a budget and why it's important? So why are we all here today? Budget is a financial plan for a specific period of time. Obviously, we're talking about the first of April to the 31st of March and really trying to work out, you know, what is the planned spend? Have we got other income and how does that match up? And obviously in council terms, then how do we then deal with our preset calculation based on it needing to achieve what we want to spend as a sort of general overview? Obviously, we're getting to the more detail as we go on. It's important because we need to be able to set that preset amount. So obviously, that is the key of what we're trying to achieve today, to understand that process in order that we can get an appropriate preset figure. Another part of the process just to consider as well with regards to budgeting. If you were in a business and you had a budget and you came in under budget, you had a surplus, fabulous, that's profit. If you don't set an appropriate budget in a council and you take more preset than you needed, then obviously you're taking, you know, more funds potentially than you need. And then that causes another question about how you deal with that. So it's not necessarily a good thing to over budget, take more preset than you need to. So that's a part of the consideration, which is a little bit different, that again, we need to be mindful of. And also throughout the year itself, monitoring the budget versus actuals can help identify potential end or overspend, allowing for corrective action. So it's not just about the ultimate goal of having a budget in order that we can set a preset, but also to have a full understanding of what the budget is, what money we've got available to us and what we need to do if it looks like there's going to be a problem. And we'll talk about that again in more detail later on. Also, I've got at the bottom there about how important it is for all members of the council to understand the budget. And that is something that again, came up in the poll. So not only in terms of the actual numbers in the budget, but also its importance. You know, why is there a budget and why should we be monitoring it, understanding the reports? You know, it's not just a case of, let's look at the bank account, that looks really healthy, we can spend money. Because obviously, there's lots of elements of, you know, have you got money in reserves? Have you got still money? What's actually in the budget? So it's really important to understand that we need to use the budget to see what we've actually got available to us and then act accordingly. So just to clarify that a little bit further, this is from the Financial Reg. So probably got something very similar in your own. So before setting a preset, the council must calculate its council tax requirement for each financial year preparing and approving a budget in accordance with the Local Government Finance Act of 1992. So just to clarify, as we said, there's that statutory duty to prepare the annual budget in order that you can set the preset. So really, really important and sometimes I think possibly overlooked in comparison to the year end process. So there's a lot of focus about getting the AGR done. And obviously, the year end process goes on for quite a long time in terms of the preparation and the waiting around for the auditor etcetera as well to come back to you. But this process is really, really important as well, because we're setting a budget in order to set a preset, which is ultimately then going to result in money, you know, coming from the pocket of people in the parish council area. So you need to set it appropriately and you must do that before the start of the financial year as well. So in terms of a budgeting timetable, this is just kind of a rough overview of the sort of process that hopefully you're working towards. But I'm hoping that you've already got some meetings and some time in place already to deal with these elements and working towards that deadline that you'll have from your district or billing authority in terms of actually submitting the preset amount. So October, so now hopefully this is some work about to start on the draft budgets, particularly if you've got other departments and committees working on it. So the sort of the starting point is now thinking about those different elements of the budget with a view to November, when the full draft budget's put together. So that's for the first draft then to start with. And then December at full council meeting. So again, if you've got that in the diary, hopefully, then you're working towards that. You've got your time fact in and about when you need to work ahead towards that. You may have reviews of the budget prior to that meeting as well. And then January is when likely when your preset will need to be agreed and submitted. So just being clear on the timetables you're working towards. And also if you do have other people working on elements of the budget, making sure that they're very clear on the times that they need to be providing you information to pull all that together. Okay, so now we've kind of understood and thought, given some consideration to the importance of the budgets and the fact that we actually need to do this process. But next then, just a couple of budgeting approaches that I want to keep in mind when we're talking about what we're going to be doing shortly, about how we actually go through this process. So firstly, incremental budgeting. And it's traditional method of budgeting and it's based on the current year and or historic data. So if you are in a scenario at your council where the structure of your budget is good, you know, you're able to produce good budget reports that compares your budget versus your actuals and everything sort of looks in line, it's what you want it to, how you want it to be laid out. The values are appropriate, you're not getting huge fluctuations due to, you know, budget amounts being incorrect. Then that's a good starting point. There's no point reinventing the wheel, have that process, have that structure there and use that as a basis for working on next year's budget. So as it says there, you generally add on a percentage or incremental amount. Now, I'd never suggest you simply add on, you know, take your budget 5%, there you go, done. You're still going to want to be analysing it section by section, line by line. But obviously, you've got a good starting point. As it says at the bottom, it doesn't encourage an in-depth analysis of the current budget, but actually that might not be necessary. If what you've got as a sort of starting point as a basis is good, then obviously use that to move forward. The reverse of that is zero-based budgeting. So I think there was a question in the poll, if it's the budget's not fit for purpose. If you're in a scenario, you've come in, maybe you're new to the council or maybe lots of things have changed, but the budget hasn't. And again, in terms of the structure, the lines that you have in the budget don't really actually correspond to what actually happens. Trying to report on those things is really hard. You know, if somebody said to you, please can you tell me, you know, what we spent on open spaces or maintaining the village hall or whatever it may be, you know, it's really hard to go and have a look at those figures and pull that information together. Or maybe you've got amounts in the budget, but when you're comparing them to the actuals, there's huge fluctuations that aren't down to true spend. It's because the budget wasn't fit for purpose in the first place. Is a point now where we actually, we need to start again. So starting from scratch, you don't consider what's gone before. You rip that up, blank piece of paper, build that budget back up again. So obviously, it allows for full analysis of all the budget elements and you must be really careful to make sure you've caught, captured everything. You've thought about every element of that budget. But it then allows you to think about each of those lines, each of those spends, what builds it up again. Also might be useful for one-off or special projects. So it might be that you decide to do some sort of hybrid if the core budget is good, but actually you need to tweak some other elements or there's some new projects or reserves that again, I'll talk about a bit later on, it might be useful at that point. But I think it's just worth saying that if you're in a scenario where you're thinking, actually, you know, our council budget really doesn't do what it should do. Is it time to start again? Because if you do have a new budget from the first of April, it will make the reporting so much easier. And when you come to do this process in a year's time, you already have a good structure in place. Okay, so next then is forecasting. And that was, I think, the main thing in the poll that people said they struggled with. So I would say forecasting is a really useful, important element of the budgeting process. Because what we want really is to know what this current year is going to look like. So we understand what's happened so far and for the full year ideally, to then inform us for what we want to think about for next year. Now, obviously, we can't wait to the 31st of March, so we haven't got a crystal ball. The next best thing therefore is to forecast. So to predict the future income and expenditure against each of our budget lines to create an expected end of year position. So you know what we happened so far, predict the months that are remaining and therefore from that basis, we have then what we expect is going to happen. The forecast, you may need to use it in conjunction with other data. So particularly if the current year isn't a normal year for you. Now, that's from actually from when we did this right back when Covid came, because obviously Covid meant for a completely non-typical financial year because costs were coming and we weren't expecting and other things weren't happening. So it wasn't a good basis to look ahead from that. So hopefully overall, we're in a reasonably good place. But if there's something specifically going on at your council where you're thinking, things are considerably changing, you know, it might not be appropriate to simply use what we've got so far. So just be mindful of that when you're forecasting. If obviously lots of things are going to change, you're going to need to pull that information in as well. Also, we're ultimately talking about forecasting to assist us with looking ahead to create next year's budget. But actually, once you've started that forecast, if you decide to keep using it, it can be really useful to inform councillors at your meetings what the end of year is going to look like. You can continue to forecast the remaining months, update your actuals as they go. And that's really useful, particularly if you do expect to a large under or overspend to give you a bit more information about what's actually going to happen. So that can also be useful to take that forward as well. Okay, so if we think about forecasting and how useful it can be, how do we actually do it? So the half-year point is a good place to start, because we're in obviously middle of October. So we're in a situation now where we have got actuals for the first half of the financial year, April to September. We know what's happened already. If we've got all our information into our cash book and reconciled everything up, then yes, we've got six months' worth of actuals. That means then we can predict six months still to go to give us our total end of year position. As it says there, you can start from any month and as I said, you may want to continue. So once you get to the end of October, you can update that with your actuals and move on. So you can continue to see what you're expecting to happen. Simple as predicting the remaining months' income and expenditure. So very similar in sort of the way you might work through the budget. But obviously, it's really important to be realistic. You know, if you, if you expect the line to be overspent, you need to show that because then you need to be understanding why that is. You know, was there a one-off thing that's not going to happen next year? So it won't affect next year's budget. Or if maybe the budget wasn't appropriate and we're going to end up overspent, then obviously you need to factor that in. So it's important to be really realistic, so we get that expected end of year position. And just like when we're budgeting, some lines will be easier to forecast than others. You know, if you have very set structure of what you pay out for a certain line, then that's nice and simple. Other things you will need to predict accordingly. But obviously, like budgeting, you're likely you're going to be exact and it's your best guess, your estimations of what you expect to happen, but being realistic. And then once you've got that, you can then analyse it against the budget. So here's an extract of a spreadsheet I set up back when I think I started at Scribe. Because prior, right at the beginning, Scribe didn't have a forecasting function. So we provided this spreadsheet, which is part of our budgeting toolkit and that is basically sort of a structure of something you might want to use for forecasting. As you can see, it's set to its different sections on the left-hand side. So I've just picked admin, grounds, maintenance and allotments. We've got some budget lines sitting under those with a budget amount for the total year. We've got our actuals as one column, so our six months' position of April to September, what we've actually spent. And then we can forecast the remaining months of the year broken down into each individual month. Our total column is our actuals versus our forecast. So what do we expect the final position to be? And then we've got a variance, so the budget versus our total expected position gives us our variance. And then that is useful then to start analysing line by line. If we're overspent on a line, do we need to then reflect that in next year's budget? Do we need to put the budget up? Was there something that's unexpected, one-off won't be repeated? And that starts to help us then form information going forward. As you can see, there's a proposed budget column. So you can then start to put ahead what you might anticipate in there and you can also comment on it. So what you've added on, what you know about things. And that's also really useful as part of this process as well. You know, things that you're expecting to happen or aware of, you must incorporate that. So budget notes as well are really useful. I'll talk about them a little bit longer, but going to keep that information, pull it all together. So you'll have your forecast, but there'll be other elements of information that you need to pull together to consider, because there's lots of different considerations here. And as we said, you know, some of it is going to have to be based on sort of estimations, expectations. It's not all an exact science. And then if you've got software, you may find that they have a forecasting feature as well. So this is just an extract of Scribe that looks sort of similar to what we just looked at. By adding some forecasting types against our cost codes, we're able to create something that looks like this, that then gives us an expected end of year position. And as I said, if you want to continue to use it, then you would just update the month that passes with actuals, update the forecasting remaining months accordingly. And then you can continue to use that as part of your process of going forward if you want to. Okay, so we now have a situation where we're ready to start thinking about trying to create a budget. As we've got then that forecast, useful bit of information to what we think this current year is going to look like as at the 31st of March, based on the fact that we forecasted the remaining months of the financial year, plus other relevant data. So some of it, it might be very simple, you know, you have a renewal figure that can go straight into the budget for something that you know, or any other information that you need to pull together. And then, once you've got that information, you're going to need to consider your expenditure. So generally, that's going to be the biggest part of the budget. So you're going to need to, you know, really focus on the items that you've got in the budget in regards to expenditure. Then you've got income, so what else is going to come in? So if you've got, excuse me, things other than the preset, what does that look like? How's that going to impact as well? And whilst we're doing that, we need to be mindful of our contingencies to reserve as well. So I'll talk about them separately, but as we're going through this process, we really again, need to think about the relationships between our budgets, different lines, reserves etcetera, and how each of those things can impact on other elements of the budget. So keeping that all in mind. And also while we're doing that, we're going to be mindful of the level of detail and the materiality. So in simple terms, that just really means to reiterate, don't just get your budget add-on 5% done. You know, you want to analyse it line by line, be clear about going to the level of detail that's relevant, but also not getting bogged down in budget lines that are reasonably insignificant. You know, you don't need to give as much time to your statutory budget as you do to maybe your staff budget or, you know, other large budget items, particularly those that are harder to predict as well and be clear on how you're coming out with those values as well. So then as we said, we can start with expenditure. And then generally, again, I break that down further to start thinking about your fixed costs. So your indirect costs, your overheads, costs that are unlikely to change and are generally reasonably easy to budget for. So things like your phone bill, anything that happens sort of on a regular basis that's got a set price to it, that you can then add a small incremental or percentage amount to, that are fairly fixed. Things like staff costs again, you know, may need some more work. And obviously, you need to take into consideration the anticipated pay award. And obviously, probably as part of this process, you're going to be doing a salary review as well. So that will need to feed into the information like the other bits that we've talked about so far as well. You may have, as I said as well, some elements that are very easy to budget for. If you have some known costs, such as your insurance renewal or the subscriptions renewals, then obviously that's nice and straightforward. You can just take that and add that into the budget. And others can have an appropriate percentage uplift applied. So again, it's then looking at what's appropriate. You may want to, you know, depending on what it's for. And I did see this morning a headline to say inflation is now at 1.7%. So things are a lot more steady than they were when I was doing this, I think a couple of years ago. Was it two years ago that Liz Truss came in? I was doing a session when she first joined. And by the time I'd done my final session of the budgeting season, she'd gone. And so that kind of gives us a feel of the upheaval at that time of the year and sort of inflation and what was going on. It was all very uncertain, but things are a little bit more settled now. But obviously, it's just important to be mindful of analysing line by line, what's appropriate to those different elements of your budget. Then you've got your sort of harder to budget for expenditure items, your reactive variable costs. So things that are harder to predict, like maintenance. You know, you may have an element to your repairs and maintenance budget that has got a fixed element if you do certain sort of inspections, maintenance, repairs on a monthly basis, let's say. But if also it requires people to phone in and say, you know, this is broken, this needs to repair, it's reactive, it's harder to budget for. Same for things like tree works. Again, there may be some set tree works, but if a tree blows down and you've got to deal with it, obviously, there's going to be some unpredictable costs there. So you want to think about if it's asset related, you know, how old are the assets? How likely are they going to be needing repair? If they're new, then hopefully, you know, the costs are going to be minimal. There might be warranties. If they're really old, you know, there's the impact of have you got a larger repair budget? But is also there a budget somewhere that's going to be able to renew those assets? But again, I'll talk about in a moment when we get to reserves. And also think about the relationship between your budget lines as well. So if, for example, you are hoping to hire out your venue more often than you have done previously, then think about the relationship there. So if you have more income, are there more costs? So if you hire it out, does that then mean that you've got to then pay more in cleaning or caretaking or heating and lighting, for example? So think about what the relationship is between other budget and other parts of the budget as well as you do that process. Generally, these ones that are harder, I would say, sort of get more time to think about. Generally, there are a smaller portion of the overall budget for your accounts. But potentially going to need to take more time over them. And as I've said as well, do keep records of notes, assumption, calculations, what you've done to get to those budget figures, because the last thing you want to get to is the April meeting and then get bogged down in, hang on a minute, why, why is it this budget figure? Where has that come from? What did we agree there? So be very clear on where those values have come from. Then we can think about income. So we need to consider other elements of income if we have any besides the preset. Obviously, if you have any very small, you know, bit of bank interest sundry bits of income, then there's not really going to be any other consideration. But if you get income from other sources, again, you need to consider what that will be. Again, I break it down. So if you have more specific guaranteed income, so if you have a specific annual rent for property that you get or a grant value that's easier to budget for, then obviously you can start with them. And then you can start to think about less certain income sources. And again, while you're reviewing it, you're thinking about, are these things likely to continue? And are we increasing our rates or fees? So again, if you've got, say, a venue that you've refurbished and that you're hoping to hire out more, then obviously your income's going to go up. But as we said, you're thinking about that relationship. Or if you've certainly got something in place already, considering what that will mean if you're putting up the rates that you're charging. So you can go through that process and obviously estimate that income from those less certain sources and to get that total income that you're expecting. Again, thinking about those relationships as part of the budget. Whilst we're doing that, we need to be mindful of our contingencies and our reserve elements as well. Because we've got our expenditure budget and our income budget, but we've got to think about, again, relationships are part of other bits as well. So amounts held for unexpected expenditure or cash flow as well. So we've got to also think about our cash flow, because the budget is what we want to spend. But we've also got to obviously make sure we've got the money at the time when we need to spend it. And that comes back relationship to our general reserve. Generally, between three, equal to three to 12 months' net revenue expenditure. Okay, so higher if you're smaller, lower if you're larger. Because obviously, the impact is greater if you're not a very large council. So you might be holding the equivalent 12 months in case something unexpected happens. And obviously, you want to be making sure that you're maintaining that an appropriate level. So not too high, not too low. Okay, so that's part of this process and where the forecast also can be useful to come in. You know, what does it look like at the end of year? If we're expecting to be in deficit or a surplus, how do we then feed that into what we're planning ahead with regards to the preset to manage it? You know, so we've got to be mindful of that as well, that if at the current year, we're eating into our general reserve. So as we talked about that budget earlier, if it's not fit for purpose and what we're finding is things we weren't budgeted for. So therefore, we're having to use our general reserve where we didn't have enough in the budget and the preset to fund everything. How does that then get reflected in future years if there's going to be a shortfall? So that's a really important part of this process as we do it, to understand, you know, how much have we got to support what we're trying to do as well. Also important though, I would say, not to build contingencies into each budget line. You know, I've seen budgets over the years and sometimes, you know, if you're particularly pessimistic, there is a tendency to want to sort of build in a what-if element to everything. But obviously, it's unlikely that everything is going to have, you know, something go wrong. So whether you're going to end up with a large budget surplus. So be quite clear about that contingency, whether you have it in the budget or reserve and how you spend against it. Because if you do use it, then obviously you need to be mindful of those one-off costs. If it's come from that contingency part, it's very, very obvious. If you're putting it against the budget line, let's say you're overspending on your maintenance line because you've had to repair the boiler, you know, that might not happen next year obviously, because once it's repaired, it's, you know, dealt with for a while. So we need to again, think of those one-off costs that aren't going to impact us in the future as well. So have that underlying thought process as you do these things about how those other elements are factoring into what you're actually working on as well. As well as that, you've also got your earmarked reserves and your projects. So the things that you want to plan to do as well and how that feeds in. But firstly though, I want to just sort of point out how useful it can be to use reserves to flatline the budget as well. So if you think about things that happen on a regular basis, but that aren't annual. So things like elections, you know, you're going to have them every so often, but they're not an annual process. Renewing your assets, maybe let's say if you renewed your computer equipment every five years in the office and the laptop and the printer etcetera, etcetera. Those things don't happen all the time, so you don't need a budget in every year. But obviously, if you don't put it in and you just do it when it happens, if you suddenly get to a point and say, right, well, next year we've got an election and we've got to replace all these assets and we suddenly need £10,000, that's going to have a real impact on what you're doing in terms of the budget and therefore the preset. So if actually you have a reserve where you do take money into the budget and put that away and sort of save it up, then you can flatline it. So let's say, you know, every year we put £1,000 into our asset renewal. After five years, we've got £5,000. We spend that money to renew our assets, start building it up again and off we go. So then we've, we've saved ourselves from those peaks and troughs that otherwise we would have been a lot more maintaining it at appropriate level. So if you have things like that, then do consider how you're dealing with that, particularly if we've got things that are coming up that at the moment you haven't got a reserve to cover. So how you might want to use that going forward. And then you might also have some projects or some one-off reserves. So things you specifically want to do, you know, in your, in your area that you want to improve and certain things, you want to install a play park or whatever it may be. So they will almost need, it's like own little mini budget, which is when I talked about zero-based budgeting to build up what you want to, you know, you need to do and what you want to spend on it. So have to factor that in as well. So breaking it down, income, how you're going to actually pay for the project. Have you got grants? Is there some budget surplus, general reserve surplus that you're going to want to put aside and then start using it for a purpose? Is there an impact on future generation? So if you've now, you know, resurfaced the car park, are you going to start charging for car parking? Or if you've done up your village hall, is that going to increase your income? Because you're hoping to hire it out more often. So have a think about how that impacts the budget. It might not be this year if that's when the project is, but obviously thinking ahead as well. And then you've got your expenditure elements as well. So the direct cost of actually doing the work. So if we think about the play park, when you're preparing the ground, buying the equipment, installing it, so the actual process of doing that project. But then the ongoing costs, so things like inspections, maintenance, building that into your budgets going forward. But then again, going back to what we said, do we then also want to have something in our reserves? So when we need to replace the slide in 10 years, for example, are we building that up? Are we thinking about how that's going to be impacted on later? So again, it's all about those relationships. What we're trying to do, are we thinking about the impacts on other parts of the budget as we go forward with it? And as I said, zero-based budgeting might be useful though, there's little particular projects and how they feed into it. And again, think about those new budget lines that might come as a result of you doing those specific projects. Okay, so now, if you've gone through that process, what we want to have is an expenditure budget and an income budget with a consideration about the impact on what, how our reserves are looking and what we're trying to achieve with our reserves as well. And then that allows us then to come up with the figure that would be required in terms of the preset and obviously to move on from what we've done to assess whether that is now an appropriate amount of what we're looking to try and achieve. So the preset requirement will be based on an expenditure budget less other income expected and or the prior year surplus. So in very simple terms, we're taking what we've calculated and we need in terms of the expenditure budget, considered what we need, what we're going to get in other income and how have we got any reserve surplus that we're looking to deal with. So if a simple example was our expenditure budget of 100 K, 20 K of other income, no issue with our reserves, either surplus or deficit, and therefore with presets 80 K. So I hope that sort of makes sense, the very simple examples of the things that you need to consider to come back to that preset figure. Okay, and then once you've got that preset figure, you can then obviously compare to what it was last year to have a look at how that looks in relation to what you've done previously. But you also want to check it based on the bandy equivalent property. So not just the total that you've come up with, particularly if your bandy equivalent has changed significantly. So your billing authority should be giving you your equivalent bandy property. So that's your bandy council tax, how many properties equivalent that? If you have a bandy... If you have a band A, I think it's half, current half property. If it's eight, I think it's double. So they'll work out the total of that. You would divide the precept over those total bandy properties to work out the precept, average precept amount per household. And then obviously you can then give some consideration to that, what that looked like previously. So particularly useful if you've had a significant change in how many bandy properties there are. So for example, significant development, for example, that then has changed it. So it's then easier to see what is the actual impact to the household, to what they're actually paying in terms of the council tax. Okay, so that's, that's an important part of the process to calculate that, to have a look at what that impact might be like. So obviously, once you've done that, we need to analyse whether that's inappropriate to what we wanted to be, what we were hoping it to be as well. So if the precept amount is vastly different to last year, what should we, can we do, we might consider about it? So firstly, are the calculations correct? So regardless of whether the precept amount looks perfect and you're really happy with what you've come up with, please, please, please check what you've done. You know, if you've got it on a spreadsheet, have you got any circular references? Have you formally picked up every single line? Because I have seen people come to us describe and they give us a preset, a budget sheet and actually lines are not included in the formula. So really important just to make sure, you know, have you checked everything? Have costs been double counted? So particularly if you've got other people working on elements of the budget, you know, have they accounted for utilities that you've also accounted for, for example. So obviously, number one, check your workings. Number two, do we need to revisit the budget? You know, have we been too optimistic pessimistic with some of these budget lines? You know, is it appropriate what we've done in there? Or do we need to try and look at cost savings or deferring projects or planned spend now? Obviously, that wouldn't be an ideal sort of response to this, because that's actually going to impact on people in your parish if you then can't do things you were hoping to do. But it's important to understand that if it's an amount that is too much that we want to go up by, how then do we mitigate that? Can we reduce the precept required by our budget surplus and our reserves? Have we considered what our budget's going to look like at the end of the year with regards to the surplus? How healthy or unhealthy is our general fund? Have we factored in that opportunity to use some of that? Do we need to offset it? And at that point as well, it's important to say as well that if we have got a large budget surplus, so there's a lot more in your general fund than maybe you want to hold and you want to reduce it, it's also really important to think about how you're then going to use it. Because if you just use it in one lump sum, one go, and obviously the precept doesn't go up or goes down, then potentially that's good. But what happens next year when suddenly you need to go back to that level? So again, you don't want to have those fluctuations. I personally, and I would imagine that anyone who's paying the precept would expect to see a small increase each year rather than huge fluctuations. The other thing to say there is so many people have come on in sessions such as this and said, actually, our councillors and our councillors really want to keep the precept at the same level. They see it as a really bad thing if we're putting it up. And that's all very well if you've got a surplus to maintain that. But what happens in three or five years' time when suddenly you can't, the costs have risen and you're not having enough money in the precept? And suddenly you need to increase it significantly. You know, surely it's better to do a small amount every year than in sort of five years saying, right, suddenly we need ten, fifteen percent. And there's a sort of a big jump there. So really give that some consideration about not just seeing it purely as that is our figure and that is what we're sticking with, because I have seen that a lot, a lot of times and that, you know, it does concern me. And in the bottom there, it says, is the change justifiable and needed? So if you're in a scenario like that, where you've been trying to maintain a precept at a certain level and it's got to the sort of crunch point of where it's just not possible to do everything with the amount that you're taking, does it now need to be put up and we need to understand about how we deal with that? Or has the scope of the council changed, particularly in line if there's more bandy properties? Do we now need to provide more services? Or do we need to do more as a response to how, you know, again, the council's feeling? And somebody came on a couple of years ago and had a really good example of this where their village had a real problem with speeding, a lot of traffic. So the intention was to increase the precept sort of over and above what might have been normally expected because they were going to do some traffic calming, put in speed, speed signs, et cetera. So they put the consultation out and sort of advised that was going to happen. And the overwhelming response was, yes, we want that. We're happy to pay more because we really want to see that happening. So I think another thing to think about there is not just to assume that we want to pay less because we don't want any services, et cetera. We want to see the results of more precept by things happening that we, you know, that we want to, want to have. So that's another consideration as part of that process. So if this is relevant to when that preset calculation is there, it may require, you know, redrafting, obviously checking, as we said, considerations about all of those things. I've just talked about how you move forward in terms of what you do with regard to the precept. But once you've got to that point of then having that precept in place, if it does mean a sort of a significant increase, maybe over and above what you hope to have, then do consider again that communication sort of levels of providing information about why the precept's going up, what's going to happen as a result of it, so that you're keeping people in the loop with how that, those things are going to take place. But just some things to sort of consider when you get to this point in terms of the calculations. Quick one in here as well, just talked about, again, this came when Liz Truss came in and all the inflation, et cetera, et cetera. Three things about those potentials for cost savings. So the reduction of the consumption of energy, you know, if someone's in the council offices all the time, can you go to automatic lighting? Does it need to be open as often, you know, paid for those utility services, et cetera? At your council meetings, if you're printing out huge packs of paper, can you reduce, you know, the printing, the photocopying that you're doing? As I mentioned before, the deferring of projects or planned spending, which, you know, I wouldn't say would be probably a good potential to make, make the savings, but not necessarily a good one because that's having an impact. These other things are trying to sort of reduce unnecessary expenditure potentially. So reviewing those contracts and suppliers, can you get some fixed price deals that then you're very clear on what you're spending? Can you invest in technology to save you money? You know, if you went for account software, if you had an account previously, could you offset some of that? Or do automate some, some responses, you know, chat G P T that John loves to talk about. Are there potential that you can use that to assist you? You know, in time savings that potentially then has a cost saving as a response to that as well. And then finally then, just to go back to what we're talking about with regard to monitoring the budget and looking ahead. So the main focus of the session today was to think about why we need to budget, i.e. we need to get to that precept and how we're going to potentially do that process. But also again, just to go back to how important it is to monitor the budget. So monitor budget versus actuals, budget reporting, so that we're providing that useful information and it's useful. You know, it's actually bearing in mind what we're looking at in terms of the structure. It actually allows us to report on what's happening. As it says there, a good cashbook is key based on the budget code. You want to be able to easily analyse what you've spent against those budget lines. So you can understand exactly what's happening. Mention notes a few times as well, so probably not so useful now, but actually if you kept notes all the way through the year from the start of the year about things that you think are going to impact the budget later, when you get to this point, you then got there to refer to, to think, oh, yes, that scope of that service is going to change or this contract is going to come to an end, or I need to consider X, Y and Z, or that asset needs replacing, or whatever it may be, you'll come to that, you'll have those notes to refer to. But also the notes of what you're doing now. So as you go through this process and set those budget figures that are agreed upon, if you do have some that are large amounts or variable that relied on some calculations, again, keep notes on that. So you've got that to refer to. If questions are asked, you're very robust in how those numbers have come about. Little extract just from Scribe there, just in terms of monitoring the budget. I'm just showing a couple of sections of income admin, but very simple that I can come in here and see what my budget is and what I've spent against it. So I can analyse exactly what's going on. Okay, so just be mindful of how you structure it, which is what we talked about right at the beginning. And then also looking ahead. So depending on your financial regs and your council, you may also be looking ahead further sort of three, five year budget sort of forecast ahead. At summary level, you know, it's not going to be possible to go to the same level of detail line by line like you are for next year. But you might want to give it some consideration for next, for next year, future years, particularly if you're larger or the scope of the council's expected to change. I spoke to a lady a couple of weeks ago and she's quite a small parish, small precept, but the amount of development that is happening in her village means her precept is going to have to increase quite considerably. So I think she was looking, wanting to do that to give a real feel of what that might look like going forward. So that can also be useful, just to sort of give a consideration about how that might look ahead. And also useful potentially for your councillors to see as well, if they're very against putting the precept up, to sort of show them what that might look like. If you add a small percentage each year, how that would then have a difference to what you do if you don't do it at all. And then what might that look like in five years' time at the deficit that you may potentially be facing? So that's something to consider. If you struggle with sort of explaining to the council the importance of sort of maintaining a small increase year on year as well. So that can also be something to consider. Right, I've done a lot of talking, but you'll be pleased. And I've got to the end of it. And you can think there about the budgeting toolkit that maybe Jessica's up in the chat as well if you want to sign up for that, which is also the detail of that spreadsheet we talked about as well. But I will hand back and if there are any questions or comments, et cetera, then I'm happy to take some.